Snow maybe here on Thursday and Friday.
I may be giving the stats to you. When I try to open it up on here, it told me files appear corrupt, contents of your file aren't acceptable.
We can access it. We just sit on ours.
Well, I can break anything in here.
We just opened it in our office.
Dave's gonna see what he produced for that one today. Andrew's gonna see what we did have photos. He'll text me one way or the other. So I'll let you know before you. I told Andrew that you have your.
So Scott Schur has it too?
I don't know if you texted him.
Yeah.
All, yeah, okay.
Scott Schur has it.
I'll try it on the computer.
It doesn't look handy.
I'll text one of them. But if you just want to know.
I do when they have to go in places to, Schur is stuck.
No, you don't.
I tell you what, this vertical schooling stuff's running out, isn't it though?
That's right, you have monkeys on your house now.
I thought I was in the clear, but now my niece is living with me. Who's second grader.
You just said second?
Seven.
Well, just the amount of work that the assignments and everything seem to be doing.
Well.
To these students who are doing it, it's daunting.
And it's, and it's tough because if she's thirteen, she can spend some time home alone. But then I don't think she has the motivation and the, to get it done. Then I bring her down to the shop, there's distractions and people coming in, so I don't, I feel like.
Put her in your office and shut the door.
So.
Did you ask me, did you want your work done?
I'm like, wait a minute, I just got this text, it was your progress report.
Hi, Blake.
How's everyone doing?
Hello. How are you? Just like, you or Marilyn have any questions about what's in front of you? This caller.
For Christmas break.
Christmas break.
Yes.
But I don't know.
I wanna make sure that we save for thirty minutes, so if it's at seven o'clock, it's like you're coming back at seven.
I promise, after I finish eating, I will wipe up my teeth.
Well, wouldn't think it would. So that's why it's that way. My mom is supposed to be in a theater tonight, she's like, hey! Take this kid home, I'm like, alright.
My life, just running, running around like crazy.
This is Jody.
Hi, Jody.
Jody, this is Blake, emailing, I deleted.
Yes.
About Pamela, so.
Oh, we get everything sorted out, ready?
Yeah, she had, I think she's, you sent another email.
Yeah, there's a copy of it.
Oh, yeah, there's a copy in front of you.
Okay.
Um, Andrew will create the Zoom tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, that's, I think that's.
Yeah, and then we told her we were just gonna go with the generic agenda.
Yeah.
To post, but then you could follow her through reading, so. I think she just wants to know what time you want her on. I was thinking eight thirty to nine thirty.
Yeah, and I do, I forgot she's mountain standard time. Does she have a problem with being at seven o'clock, or I mean, like, seven thirty there?
She said anytime, so you guys can, I thought probably thirty to nine thirty, but.
I, I know she said a lot of times she works later and sleeps in sometimes a little bit more, but.
Thirty to nine thirty and then wrapping up.
Thirty to three thirty?
Thirty to three.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Are we taking, are we taking a lunch between there?
Getting lunch, whether you wanna do a working lunch or not, but.
Okay, well, I have to meet somebody in between there, so I may have to jet out or something for twenty minutes or something, but.
You have lunch whatever time you wanna break for.
Okay, okay.
Ms. Jody will be there.
This.
That is the master facilities plan that was too big for me now.
Okay, okay.
So in case anything else never needs, need to go back on a thumb drive, just give it back to her, she'll put whatever else you need on.
Okay.
Amy, is there any public speaking?
No.
Does that mean they've given up on us?
Dave, seeing your face shield, my dad's birthday was yesterday, and I was talking to him last night, and he said that my cousin had sent him like six or seven different kinds of face coverings, one being like that, and she had written out, you know, what each one was for.
David, I think we could dress you up, I think we could almost pass you as an Andy Reid.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
That's what people call my.
Yeah.
Sorry. Just wanted you to know, just get you a cheese hat.
Right.
Did you say a pathway hat? I gotta watch the pathway for the meeting side, so.
Yeah.
I will.
Okay, my dad's been stopped several times thinking, they think he's, he, my dad looks just like Dr. Phil.
Like.
Dr. Phil. I mean, almost identical. He's been stopped in Wichita, I don't know how many times they think that he's.
To stay.
Yeah, they think he's Dr. Phil.
Can you fix his problem?
Yeah. Right.
Put that anti-fogging stuff on there on me.
This one, Kathy.
Say Andy Reid's.
She makes these, and they sell them over at Class Pharmacy, Kathy.
Who makes them?
Kathy, I'll think of her name in a minute.
I was in there today, and they have five variety.
Anyway, yeah, oh my gosh, they take out packs like this, but this one I bought yesterday.
Right, right.
And she forgot to put the band in there with the. With the, so it doesn't fit real close, but, I'll stay away from y'all. Like I said, I will wash my own table when we're all through. I've got all kinds of those too. Oh, but I went into Dylan's last night late, and they've got three for, I think they're two dollars these, five ninety-nine or something, and they were all Christmases, so I got three more of those. I forgot to write mine, I'm still working on it.
Yep, yep, thanks. Yeah, Teresa tried. Tried to keep in it. No, she didn't.
Yeah, fell through the skylight, forty-four feet.
What's that?
Um, at the shop, at the.
Yeah.
Terminal distribution center in Kansas City where Wayne works, and they were roofing the shop, of course, you know.
I don't see why not.
Because of my draft, whatever, and so.
Now you throw me off, I probably screw it up or something. Yeah.
But, motion was out there all afternoon, it was just, I mean, how horrible.
They are scary, aren't they? My husband will just, he's careful, and he'll hook it up there, but he'll just go foot over foot and, and turn around and get up on the roof, and I'm like, I'm like, this. And then I get up there and I go, shit.
It's like the falls and Colorado Springs.
You got kids in town.
That's terrible.
Well, I went by Jim's the other day, and he was on his tower.
Was he?
And I yelled at him, and I said, you're too old for that.
Well, don't distract him and yell at him when he's up there fast, what are you doing?
That's what I was gonna say.
Well, he was holding on, and he wasn't moving anywhere. And he knew I was coming by.
Startle somebody and they might move.
That might be true.
Well, the KESHA got enough pressure to make changes to whether the spectators are going to be. They are going to be, they allow two for.
For student.
Garden. They're still not competing there, so.
Was that what the parents were, went to the school board meeting for?
Yeah, parents said over Thanksgiving, KESHA that came out said most spectators shouldn't be in there, and then there's a process, be able to reach that.
Well, I don't think it's such a bad idea until we evaluate how kids come back from Christmas break. You got kids, I mean, it's different in the school districts maybe where they're not, I mean, it, you know, they're not traveling maybe as much or something, but you've got kids coming from all over the country and the world. But, you know, until we know exactly how.
Yeah.
Who's, who's testing positive, are they running through, are they gonna test right when they come back, everyone?
Yeah. Yeah, and anybody that's coming from. International or anybody.
Hopefully, it's back here.
Yeah.
That's one of the states listed on CDC will be.
Got it?
Self-identified.
I think I read that Shawnee Michigan North, Northwest had to pull out of the state playoffs.
Thank you.
Thank you, continue to see it, J.
We could expect some of our parents to say something, a lot of our athletes don't have parents close by, but.
Yeah. Have full atmosphere.
But it's not that many games.
I mean, no, yeah, I mean, like we said, we, we work at our town here.
Well, I did, you really could.
I didn't pay someone.
Yeah, well, that's just it, I mean.
I mean, the plane filters have changed.
I'm afraid everybody's gonna already have had it by the time we leave.
I know, that's, I mean.
What's gonna take it down?
Vaccinations come out, yeah.
Honestly, I think, I think it's close to.
Before it all sudden then, the vast majority of people are gonna have it, it's probably great.
Yeah, I think they said.
You need your work for anything? I'm gonna take this whole event, so I'm just.
Vaccinations with any sense of cancer here.
Yeah, all of the highest risk, and, yeah, absolutely.
For people listening, yes, yeah. Yep.
Hey, we're considered essential, never have to sit down. Me not, so my, if I hop back in my closet, we call it office, but, you know, the guy is out front, baby.
She's got a fancy office.
Oh, you just wait till we get that new building built.
You're gonna fancy her.
I, it won't be a closet, it'll be a whole fourteen foot by sixteen foot, I will have a closet in my office instead of my office being in a closet.
Your office is not very big.
It, it's a, it's a, well, it really did used to be a little storeroom. And we're just, so, yeah, I'm pretty, and we're even gonna have a break room, where I don't have to go out in the shops to use the microwave. So, I mean, I'm.
Do you have a special area for the dogs?
No, they take over everything, there's no need to designate a special area for them, they take it all over. A little mud, some kind of carrier that was a little bitty thing that we got out of a car wreck we towed, and. Welcome to you every time. You know, when I, years ago, when I had a retail store.
So we won't have.
Uh, a leash on at that time, and so I would take Chloe to New York, and she'd just like litter around wherever, until the vet came in. And I mean, the vet was a nice lady and everything, but when the vet came in, Chloe was like.
I remember you.
Yeah, it's like, you're like crazy. Yeah, it's like, are you kidding me? Well, and half the time we had the parent down there too. I wasn't there one day, but the parent was back in Skeeter's office, and Frank came in outside from the burger, oh! And he thought it was me, he's like, hi, Shanda! Hello, hello, twinkle twinkle, he's like, hello? And Logan's just laughing, going, that's not Shanda you're talking to.
Well, since the total of it's over fifty.
Oh.
I did that one time.
State agreement covers thirty-two.
That dog didn't like the bird either. So we had just got the bird. That time I was fully wanting to get her hair done like every two weeks, and so Alice's bird.
No, no, just, just, okay, good, okay.
She, I, I got asked me with these birds, so I was like, well, yeah, that'd be fun for the boys.
Yeah, yeah.
So. Anyway, shortly after we got the bird, we had a dinner party for about fifteen people. And it was kinda like, it was, part of it was out on the courtyard, but, you know, in house or whatever, and so the bird just started to me, as long as I would be, if I was by the stage, it was great, if I moved, it was great. Yep, so I mean, I just got her food and shit off, took her upstairs, and she was like, I had no business in that.
Well, ours is a yellow mane, Amazon, and usually lives about sixty years.
Yeah, we had an orange jet Amazon, and it was just that one, it was a joke, it lives eighty years, so we didn't prepare the bird.
Yeah, that's why ours is technically our youngest daughter, Jane, she's, yeah. So we didn't technically prepare, well, this is Jane's bird, you know, it's just like our hair. Well, she did that, but she didn't take her, but eventually she might. She moved out, didn't take the two dogs, or the bird, got a bath in town, and then moved back in.
Absolutely.
So now we got a bath in town, Jesus, that one doesn't have a job.
Oh, no.
So, yeah, two months ago, we were empty nesters, now we got two teenage girls in a bath in town, I definitely used to. The joys and the adventures, you just. You have a nice full house for Christmas, though.
I think we're gonna end up in Kansas City, Skeeter's got his phone on, on the twenty-second.
Oh, that's the healthy doing.
Yeah, we're responding to.
And then, our kids have to work Christmas Eve, they don't have daycare.
She's good.
At there. He's a firefighter, she's a nursery teacher, so, yeah, they. Yeah, I think we're just gonna stay through Christmas up there, so we can keep the grandkids following up for.
Well, good, you're gonna take those two with you then, so.
Um, Deirdre will go with us, my niece will, uh, Jane hasn't decided yet, she may go to grandma's.
Don't know.
She's waiting to see her work schedule, let's see if she's gonna work day after day before. So I think we're gonna do the following weekend. Get our crew together here, yeah. I agree, but he will have those photos for you.
No new employees, but I have the bio for Cory, but we'll have that January.
Yeah.
Well, he's gonna be out of town till like.
You're kidding! I tell you what, that's why I don't have a position for a while. He really is good, he's a, he's better than my position was in, uh, Kansas City, that was Kansas City Bone and Joint Clinic. Well, see, mine originally was scheduled for March, and the, and the hospital said, uh-oh, so, I sit in our church as a heart services.
Man, is Steve doing better?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's, back to normal energy, normal.
How long was he down?
And he, well, maybe once or four, and he came down, but so, so they were passing, and that was gonna take a while.
Absolutely, in total, it was fifteen days.
So he just wandered over, oh, to my, to my chair, my lawn chair, and said, my, my staff's gonna call you tomorrow. I said, okay. Anyway, he's good, I keep telling him we're blessed.
Workless?
We're blessed, we didn't get sick, sick.
Did he lose taste, or, I, that's, taste.
No, neither of us did.
Taste, smell, and headaches are like the three big indicators that I've seen lately, more so than some of the other stuff. Headaches, yeah. Yeah, that's.
Well, at first taste and smell wasn't even in the initial symptoms, one month ago, I mean, it, it took a little while before.
What's that?
Those crabs opened up, they lost taste and smell.
At first, they were just looking for fever and dry cough, and they.
That was before.
Yeah, more of, more of stuff of that, yeah.
And they coughed pretty quick, but.
Yeah, we added that, oh, I would say that was in. Right, March, March? February, March.
Well, and you'd start hearing it kind of flit down, and you go, ooh.
I've got six o'clock. Everyone okay to start?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, like I said, I've got six o'clock, I'll go ahead and call the Garden City Community College December eighth Board of Trustees meeting to order. In compliance, of course, everyone's wearing masks, so we're gonna make sure that everyone speaks and, and puts their name before speaking, so anyone that's listening understands who's talking. We'll also do roll calls for, obviously, for here being present, but also for, for any votes that we take, so this is Blake Wassinger, and present.
Shanda Smith, present.
Marilyn Douglas, present.
Beth Federal, present.
Leonard Hitts, present.
Okay, great, and we'll go ahead and start with comments for myself, and the only thing that I have is, is that I would ask that we. Have a, have a. Order to a jet, amend the agenda, we got a. Med dose delivery system grant purchase that we need to add to it, and we just got the information, and I think that was available as fast as we could get it here this morning or whatnot, so. That would be a line item G under the consent agenda, if I get a motion for that.
Add that to the agenda G.
Second, Beth.
Okay, Leonard moves that we add item G of the med dose delivery system, and Beth seconds, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, and roll call, this is Blake, aye.
Shanda, aye.
Marilyn, aye. Beth, aye.
David, aye. Leonard, aye.
Okay, great, and again, I guess maybe the only other reminder is we have a special board retreat coming up this Saturday, starting at eight AM. And, and our plan is to, to be adjourned by three thirty, and have Doctor Pamela Fisher. Come in and, and via. By Zoom and help us lead a special board meeting for some board training, so just, I know those are all on your guys' calendars, but just as a reminder. And the other reminder, tonight, and we will have an executive session scheduled, so. We have no new employees to introduce at this time, so we'll go ahead and move right into item line two, consent agenda. I would ask if anybody has anything they would like to have removed for further discussion, otherwise, a, a, a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I think we should remove G and talk about that a little bit, since that was a late add.
Okay.
I move that we accept the consent agenda items A through F. For approval.
Okay, Beth makes the motion, David seconds that, all those in favor for the approval of consent agenda items A through F with further discussion on G, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, okay, this is Blake, aye.
Shanda, aye.
Marilyn, aye.
Beth, aye.
David, aye. Leonard, aye.
Okay, great, and so we'll go into that G item, the med dose delivery system, there is some information there right in front of you for everyone to see, and hopefully. Anybody that's viewing can also get a hold of that, but. Questions for Doctor Ruda or Carla about this?
Oh, nothing specific, just, I mean, what's, what's the benefit to the students, we didn't have a lot of time to digest this, so.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, Patsy has, has presented this there, so this is, this is an item that we've had in planning, that's been brought up through the planning process here for the last couple of years, really to be able to augment and enhance a med dose delivery system and bring it up to current standards of what they see when they're out in clinical settings. Current system is a med dose delivery system that is dated back to the eighties, so this, this particular system there then is to be consistent with what they are practicing for when they go out into employment. The other thing that I would say, and, and Patsy alluded to this there as well, but one of the things that has been highlighted as an area to enhance and improve as students are going through the NCLEX, which is the National Board Examination at the end of their program. One of the things that has been cited and highlighted is the category of safety. And this is an area where students needed to improve, this particular medal, delivery system is one that will provide several factors to be able to enhance. The questions and, and what it is that is being asked on the NCLEX exam specific to safety, so, again, it enhances the level of, of pedagogy and training that we're providing here at the college, addresses the skill sets that are being assessed at the end through the NCLEX exam, and then to prepare them for movement out of the system that they're going to see. The other thing that I would say is that as far as the funding. You know, wanna credit Patsy and Mark and Chuck on this there as well, is that we've identified a grant through the state of Kansas, which is a Perkins Initiative grant that will fund thirty-two thousand dollars of this cost. And then additionally, we also have outlay funds through the Corley Estate that recovered remaining twenty-three thousand seventeen dollars and sixty cents, so no general fund being used on this expense, all grant.
Can you just explain to me the medication carts, is that what I, like what I see at the hospitals when the nurses are going around, and they got all of the, they're passing out the, going room to room and taking the medication, is that what we're talking about? Or is it, they're a little, is it a little more complicated than that, it says, it's something about. Delivery system. I'm, I'm, if they want it, I'm in favor of them getting it, I just don't really know that I understand what it is that we're doing, the carts, is a new form of cart or something that.
The way I understand it, correct me, you can.
I was just gonna say, there's a, a central place where medications are on the floor, but there's also movable carts for the nurses that are taking care of their patients, and this system cooks the. Armband, the electronic record, the medication order, and the time that it was given, all together at once, and so it really helps alleviate med errors. And, and it, it is something they have to practice.
Organizing the system.
Yeah, yeah, so it's a good deal, yeah. Yeah, yeah, so it's a good deal. Yeah.
This is David. I just wanted to mention Patsy on this. Pretty much explained.
Yeah, very thorough, did a good job.
And when we expect that they'll get to have this in the.
We do expect that we will have this in place there by the spring semester.
Good.
Any other questions for Dr. Ruda? Always nice when it's grant money coming and not from general fund.
So this is Marilyn. I'll make a motion that we approve item G as presented.
This is Shanda, all seconds.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. This is Blake, aye.
Shanda, aye.
Marilyn, aye.
Beth, aye.
David, aye.
Leonard, aye.
All right, very good. Moving right along. Next page here. Confirmation of monitoring reports. And that's gonna be.
We didn't have any.
We didn't have any.
No. Okay, yep, yep. Yeah.
Their Saturday instead.
No, yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, we have.
Make up your time there, so no review of monitoring reports, so. Moving on to other, and I believe there's no public comments scheduled, so we can move right past there. President's report, Dr. Ruda. Make it, we can, we can maybe make this a time. Meeting, okay, okay.
I think there's some, some pictures that correspond here with some of the items we're talking about. This is a picture of twenty-two, twenty-twenty meets judging national champions. Our Buster Red Meets team competed and won the. Virtual national contest, bringing home the national championship this year. Once again, this is the sixth. National championship in the program's history. The team also set a school record in both beef grading and the questions category. And won by the highest point margin that they've had in the program's history, so. Credit to these students, Dr. Alexander, for the preparation and work that went into. Being successful even during the pandemic and be able to still compete in the contest virtually. Couple of other points of reference as we're talking about grants. This year, we did have ten grants that were submitted from campus to go towards Mary Jo Williams. Trust that, that has grant applications that are available each fall. From that, we had four of the ten that the Mary Jo Williams generously has approved. Over sixty thousand dollars worth of grant funding. So just to highlight some of the projects that will. Be funded through the Mary Jo Williams, our comprehensive learning center, tutoring center. Received just over nineteen thousand to purchase some additional private study cubicles and study tables for the library. To enhance tutoring. The automotive tech program received just over eighteen thousand to purchase two brake lathe kits. That will be used to expand our high school automotive program, both Garden City and Polkham. Carpentry program received six thousand eight hundred to purchase a new saw. Industrial saw for the carpentry program. And then the counseling and advising staff received nineteen thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars for the purchase of sixty-eight Chromebooks. But as we transition to web registration of four students, these computers will be used in the advising offices for our staff and faculty. So the students can be able to interact with faculty during advising appointments and be able to help with the registration process. Going to electronics there as well, so. Again, just a, a public recognition, Mary Jo Williams Chartered Trust. They're funding these programs. And the projects here on Kansas there as well. And then finally, just a. Kind of a highlight on some projects. You know, particularly with, well, not finally, two, two final measures here. Some facilities updates that we have, several projects that are ongoing right now. Wanted to highlight just a few of them, that we have building controls installation that is occurring right now, so the access controls. Will be happening between December fourteenth and January eighth. We also have several remodels of our business office. We'll get a chance during. Office hours, be able to come in and check. We have renovated the business office there. Painted and remodeled business office and changed around some of the. Some of the. Office layout there of, of that particular area there to help with better functionality. Also have some classroom remodels, both the criminal justice as well as a relocation building to be able to update and bring some of our classrooms. A little bit more current and up to date on technology and some other areas there as well, so. Several other highlights, there's about twelve different projects that are on the list of things we'll be completing. Over November, December timeframe, so they're just kind of some highlights of projects that we're working on. And then the final. Point that I just wanted to kind of highlight there as well, and you'll see some. Some of our faculty and staff members unitedly this past week have donated the two hundred and fifty dollar gift card. To the campus closet, be able to help. Provide some supplies and different needs for the campus closet, so. That is Deb Euler presenting that gift card there to our academic building staff and faculty. And then also just wanted to highlight some of the work being done by our faculty and our students, both Phi Theta Kappa and our. Public Safety Department students teamed up and collected items and stuff stockings for the Travis Park Memorial. Stocking drive and go to those that are serving our country. Had enough to be able to stuff eighty-nine stockings and have collected two hundred and seventy dollars to help us that shipping there as well, so. This tremendous service and work is being done there and getting credit there to those programs there as well.
That's. I'll ask a question.
Yes, sir.
On this meet judging team. We win it often, that's great, but where does it go from there? These, are these things that these people who are on that team. Can take in a job application and who would they take that to? Would it be like Tyson to look at the meat? Would it be some commercial cannon company? Where does that go from here? I'm, I'm proud of it. I like it, but I don't know that I understand that much more about it.
Yeah, great question. I mean, it's two, two ways there. I mean, one is, is that they can take that on the transfer route there. There are four-year universities that have meet judging programs, K-State, Texas Tech, Oklahoma State. So several different four-year opportunities that have scholarships available for students, but then also. As you had mentioned, Tyson, USDA prepares them for going down leave inspection. Different facets there that you can see at USDA. We've had several students that have transitioned in that route. So, you know, there's, there's application that they can have. There's also application in feed yards in different areas where they can do.
And they can put this on a resume, that being advantageous.
I was lucky enough to get to do a tour with Endowment one time and, and Clint took us back and, and kind of showed us. The workings of it and working with Paul on Endowment. You kind of get to hear both sides of it, so it is really interesting.
Well, I, I like it. I think it's great that we have that recognition, but I just didn't really know what, where it went from here. Sure.
Two, two things I'd like to share. Clint Alexander was on our team when, when Gail Cybert was here. It wasn't called Meats Judging then, it was, I think, Animals Cy, I can't remember what it was. But anyway, Clint was from Satana and Gail recruited him. And from here, he went to Texas Tech.
Yes.
And then when he came back, so that was great for us. One other thing I want, I want to mention and not, not to embarrass Gail Cybert, but. One, one day I went out and I recruited and I brought a woman judge named back to him. He, he took it and he recruited her and we got her and she was great. The biggest problem Gail had. With me recruiting a woman was that meant one more. Motel room every time they went out of town. It was funny because two years later, he had almost an entire. Girls judging team and they did well, so.
I noticed in this picture, there's three.
There's three women, yeah.
Yeah.
And I. Are they better at it?
I think it depends on the candidate.
Well beyond where Gail works.
Yeah.
You know, that's the credit to Clint.
Yeah. Well, Gail, Gail did take us.
Oh, yeah.
To the nationals, so, but, but he, he was so good and Clint was, of course, one of these better judgers.
But I think there's also applications to go in restaurant culinary business and there's, there's things even more far reaching. Because it goes into food safety, food preparation, so there's, there's a lot of ancillary jobs that.
Are we, are we leveraging the, the importance of this beyond? This little area, how do we, how are we making this known to more and more people? Garden City, where you need to go if you want to get into that profession. Are we putting it in any of our advertising, our recruiting? Where's that go?
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely an aspect that we use in marketing. And there's, there's things that we highlight as far as student successes. There's things that we.
Didn't the entire team go to Australia once ever?
Yeah.
Couple of some. They got back in, I think.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do you, do you know where these, these four people in this picture are from?
The gentleman's an international student.
Okay, good.
I think, no, I don't know. I know that the majority of the students that he, he has approved, I mean, there, there's. There's really students from all over, but the majority of them come from Southwest Kansas.
Okay.
So I could find out, but I know the majority of them.
Just curiosity.
Hugaton's a large recruiting area for them there, but I know just really the Southwest Kansas region's a good place for them.
Does Buster Red Means help finance all these trips?
No, no, I mean, there's, there's things, I mean, there's some things that. Have been able to, to help finance there in the past there, and in the past they will go out to, to Tyson and be able to do. Some different types of work there for Tyson. Meat inspection and different things that Tyson makes donations back to the program on since the pandemic there, then. All external visitors have been shut down from the plant there, so. You know, at this point, there, there isn't a lot of that fundraising there that, that happens on that and Buster Red Means doesn't. Doesn't help off ship, offset the cost of travel. Those are.
So.
Cost that, that occurred.
Has Tyson been partnering with us on a lot of this?
Very well.
Yeah, that's why I heard.
Yeah, Tyson Seaboard does some.
Seaboard also.
National B.
National B.
Okay.
I have another question for you, Dr. Ruda. Any COVID updates on the campus? I mean, I know that we're. Home now, but.
Trish updated yesterday that we had a hundred, we had. Hundred and twenty-four cases since August. That's students, faculty and staff. We currently have two in isolation and she said fourteen to fifteen quarantine.
Okay.
But I think for the number of employees and students we have, that's been pretty.
You'd be great to have zero, that's not reasonable.
Yeah. It's still up there, but we're, I know Trish is, is handling it, so.
Well, I think, you know, the decision. Knowledge of back and question decisions made there, the decision for students to be able to transition on the Thanksgiving, I think. As you started to see where the, where the spike on cases really started to happen. You know, it was a good decision to make in that transition.
For sure.
So. I think that was, that was one that prevented further.
Right, right.
Very good. Anybody else? From President's Report? Thank you, Dr. Ruda. Incidental information, only a couple pages. With a light board meeting, there's a light load of incidental information. Anybody have any comments on that? On those back pages?
Just wanted to highlight one thing there from the bookstore. Program there that will have gift baskets available, so the parents can order gift baskets for Valentine's Day and finals. That process in spring semester.
Yeah.
Students get a little bit of. Here, I guess in a basket that goes into their.
Yeah.
Room, which are their.
Great, yeah, always, always need to have a little stuff like that. Okay. Dave, Vinnie County Economic Development Corporation?
Another new report, they are working remotely.
Okay.
You'd have to follow and make them a point good soon.
Okay. Okay. Beth, K C C T?
Okay, we had a Zoom meeting. Last Saturday from eight to, was a little bit longer than we thought. I'm gonna highlight just a, a few things. Legislative update and budget requests, that's on the state local. KBO or Higher Education Council Report and then the Kansas Chamber two thousand and twenty workforce report. On the Kansas Chamber, I gave all of this to, to the president's office, so in case you have any questions. But when I get to that Kansas Chamber, there's a big report on a back, just kind of hold it up for them to see it. No, not that, the, 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 the very back. It's all by itself on that little clip. There. And, and one interesting, and it, it goes through, one, one interesting thing about the KBO. They've not always been our friends. But that may be changing a little bit because the community colleges are highlighted in the report. And I'll finish that up in just a minute. This is probably more than you ever wanted to know, but I feel like some of it you do need to. And President's Office again has the total report and even the stuff I'm telling you. The, the shortfall was not as big as it was expected to be. Senate Bill one sixty-five took away about eight point five million. They're now reviewing it. Hopefully, only ten percent will be cut by the budget. We're waiting on the state of the state address to find out for sure what happens. But the, the community colleges are working to get this Senate Bill one sixty-five fully funded. They'd like to have a flat budget request, no cuts. The enrollment figures were down significantly across the state, so they probably still need. One point eight billion to two point million more and they may have, you know, who knows? They may have to borrow from the feds to get some of this. The Promise Act, oh, I, I missed just one thing. The legislator needs more information as they go into this next year. There were a lot of moderates that were lost in the election, more conservative people in both. The House and the Senate, so we have to do our work in. Educating it, conservative legislatures on how good the community colleges are for this state. There are, is a shortage of workers in the, in the state house, and so they're, they're having trouble getting through everything. Also, there, what I, what I read in, in this report, they told us that there are at least twenty-five percent more early retirees. So the Promise Act passed in both houses, the governor vetoed it. It would definitely help the middle-class students, those are, you know, payment for the classes that are in high demand. Some of them that are in high demand though are lower funding-wise or lower when they go out to start. Take for example, oh, med aids, anything or nursing. There's a lot of, lot of them that don't get the higher wages like. Oh, the engineers when they re, you know, graduate from the four-year school, so again. We need to keep educating. That on this Promise Act, it's community colleges for free if students work in the state two years. Now, if they transfer on to. Now, if they transfer on to a four year school, that doesn't start until after they receive the baccalaureate. Ryan or President Ryan, if I make mistakes, yell, okay? The, um. A co- President Ryan alluded to this in his report to us when he mailed it. The merger and acquisitions issue, if you remember several years ago, Dodge City and Fort Hays State. Were going to go into a merger and it was going to be Fort Hays State at Dodge City Community College. Uh, the regions are kind of pushing this again, I guess would be a mild way of saying it. Uh, they want to take the legislator out of the process. Community colleges have not seen any written bill, and I think it hit pretty much surprise. The legislators need to be required for any changes, this we're under a statutory framework. So just bring a bill in, done do it. And K bore was not blindsided, whatever you hear, because they had not contacted even the community colleges here, so I know. Okay, then we talked about program to program articulation, there still is a problem. Because if if I'm a a business major and the classes I take here maybe transfer to one school, don't transfer another. They'll 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 use them as an elective. So all of a sudden, a kettle when they transfer has elective clear up to here, whether they need them or not. It also then requires more time spent. So for before the student completes their program, so again, we've got, and I know our. Our advising com- uh, committee and department and report and, uh, department, they're all working on this. I I remember when when we first started it and we had a page or a a site. On our on our transfer site, and we had all the region schools. Every course in our catalog was on this site and how it transferred to all these other schools, and I know they're working hard. The biggest problem we had at that point was. The school or the university would take it in the transfer, but where we ran into trouble was the individual departments or advisors. Uh, and a lot of times our students were able to work out the problems by. Going back to the transfer articulation person. And say, hey, am I having a problem with this? But I know this is going to be an ongoing problem because we're all out there wanting the same students. Concurrent enrollments, uh, K through twelve payments for classes. Or I mean, some of the schools are saying, okay, we will pay for, excuse me, we will pay for our students to take those classes. The it's an equity problem in that, say, if you're in one of larger community colleges and you have budget to pay it, a larger schools. They can pay it, a lot of the smaller you, uh, districts cannot pay it, depending on the 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 cost, so. Uh, at the different schools, so that's something. Uh, state pays for high demand and high wages, I mentioned that a while ago. Not so much for critical needs, early childhood education, fire science, criminal justice, those. They're not higher as high wages as some, but there is so much demand for them. So, um, we need to increase. Our legislator's understanding of this on the Promise Act particularly. And we need to continue doing in. We have our students fill out the fast food, because that's a definite requirement for the, uh, Promise Act.
Yes, I have a question about that, so the bill was, um, did not pass last legislative session.
It no, because the governor vetoed it as she looked at the shortages of money.
And so we're going to introduce it again, or K C C T is going to introduce it again?
Right.
Okay.
And, um, as in the budget. We we have to wait and see what her recommendations are in the state to state. The A C T, A C C T, the American. Is virtual this year, if you would like to participate, there are ways to do this and you can contact us. Uh, one thing that was mentioned was Jake La Turner is a new representative, and he was responsible. For the Kansas tax lead, which applied to cities and counties. Uh, one of the things that that was suggested is he really needs educated on the community college taxing.
Did you get Senator President?
Um.
He got elected to the Senate.
He got elected.
I thought it was Masterson.
Masterson, yeah, you're right.
Okay.
Masterson did.
Right, a big concern on on everybody's. Mind on a very virtual learning for students, the effectiveness particularly in the remedial education area. That's that's a big concern. Uh, the future Higher Education Council, there's an organized framework and recommendations chart, it's there. And I made, uh, I do have a copy of it. What I do, I'll I'll pass it around just as soon as I find it. And, oh, there it is, I'm almost through. That that, as I mentioned, the Kansas Chamber workforce report. Uh, as I mentioned, they've not always been in our court necessarily, but, um. I think we're getting there, the workforce, they've they've made a statement that workforce will not grow in the next decade, they're thinking, I think, of the. Majors from the universities. As as being, but we need to get more involved in this. Because in our areas, the money we've gotten, particularly carpentry, everything like that, that that meets the needs of our area, there will be. Increases because we're meeting the needs. Scholarship programs, they suggested that resident requirements, residency requirements need to be a part of that. Um, maybe another area is how well the the workers are retained and so forth. Kansas Unemployment Council, as a trust fund. Uh, probably will conclude in March, and what that does. Then they may have to borrow from the feds to keep it up, but but they take care of the fraudulent or they're trying to. Address the fraudulent unemployment claims and things like that. Next meeting is going to be remote, it usually happens when we have the Phi Theta Kappa. Uh, we're not going to do that. Uh, on site, they are working on a way to honor the students. And I'm sure you're glad that I'm finished.
Thank you, Beth, for the update. A lot of good information, still a lot of stuff happening. Uh, we certainly appreciate K C C T, what they do for colleges, community colleges. And I, to my understanding, we don't have anything from SGA, as nothing's really taking place, especially with kids off campus. Um, now, so, um, and I know we have Perla and she's already up, ready to go, Perla, sort of report from Faculty Senate.
Hi, good evening, everybody, um, yeah, my report will be very short, we are still working on finishing up all of our tasks. We are trying to get the Zoom guidelines ready. Um, and hopefully put out by the end of this week or maybe Monday, Tuesday, so that faculty have those guidelines with them. And they can add them to their syllabi for the spring semester. Um, and we're also trying to finish up the quarantine guidelines so that we have those ready to go as well. Um, and they can be shared with students when students get put on quarantine. And that's really what Faculty Senate has been trying to do, just kind of finish up all our little tasks before the semester's over. In general, faculty, as you know, we're in the middle of finals week, so we're right in the middle, we are. Dealing with online finals and trying to put out fires when they come out and just trying to make sure that we. Have everything run smoothly so far, not so smoothly, but students are understanding and we are trying to help out, I know. At at least personally, I had several issues yesterday and this morning, but students were trying right away, and so we were able to. Get it, uh, all fixed up before they ran out of time, so it really has been a great effort between, uh, students and faculty to get through this week. And then I also know that faculty are working on assessment, we are, uh, trying to turn in reports as part of the assessment team. Um, we will be having a, uh, workshop, actually two workshops on Monday. Um, to kind of help faculty finish up their reporting and their reports are due for, uh, course assessments, uh, by Tuesday, so. That's really what faculty is working on, trying to finish up the semester, finish up finals and then do our assessments. Any questions?
I know, this is Shanda, I know you said that you've had some problems and and kind of working through and getting those figured out. Are there any major obstacles with finals this year that you haven't found a solution to yet?
No, not really, it's really the the issue, and I think we did do a lot of work ahead, the issue is that students. Um, the ones that are working kind of last minute, um, for me personally, it was that they didn't have the correct. Laptop or the correct access, uh, which is something that ideally they would have figured out before today. The final, and most students did, we even had a practice exam that was just like silly questions last week, and most students got through that. But there is a few that just don't and wait until the last minute, and they they obviously know they have to do the final, so. That's when they start trying to troubleshoot, but no, I think everything we've seen, at least everything I've seen, we have been able to fix. Um, Jamie has done an amazing job to be there for us whenever we have canvas questions, and we've had to, um, even ask I T to help us. Whenever something went kind of crazy, but really everything has come together so far, and from other people that I've heard from, same kind of thing. Come up, but we've had a fix for everything so far.
Well, thank you guys for all the hard work you're putting in, I know this is not your easiest round of finals you've ever done, so thank you guys.
You're welcome, no, thank you, thank you for the appreciation, we really do appreciate, mean appreciate it, because grading online finals sucks, let me just say. Can we go back to paper, please?
Anything else for Perla before she exits out?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You.
Merry Christmas.
You too.
Okay, all right, very good, um, on to ownership linkage, anyone, um, have anything would like to share?
Have we got anything on the website feedback that needs to come to us?
Yeah, I haven't received anything, and yep, okay, yeah. You know, um, and Dr. Ruda, yep, doing a good job there, um, okay. Um, moving on to item six, executive session.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I ask that we move. The board into recess into executive session to discuss an individual employee's performance. Pursuant to non-elected personnel exception under coma. Which, if discussed in open meeting, might violate their right to privacy and that President Ryan Ruda be included. The open meeting will resume here in the president's conference room in thirty minutes, which would be. Seven.
Eleven.
Eleven.
Okay, I have a motion to go into executive session.
Second, and Beth?
Okay, I have a motion and a second to go into executive session for thirty minutes, resuming back here at seven eleven, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, this is Blake, aye.
Shanda, aye.
Marilyn, aye.
Beth, aye.
David, aye.
Leonard, aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just blocked this and there's no.
Yeah, and all the rest of my. She's. So I think she just forgot.
Okay, so do you have any questions? No, the question about the website feedback, we'll go over that tomorrow, kind of show what she's talking about. Shanda?
Yeah.
I'm kind of sure this. Something new on the website.
She created something new on the website.
Um, okay, I've got seven eleven. No action taken from an executive session. But I will ask for another motion to return back into executive session for an additional fifteen minutes.
That's your specialty.
Um, I make a motion that we return to executive session to continue our discussion on the previous topic, including Dr. Ryan, and we plan to be there ten minutes.
Fifteen.
Fifteen minutes, meaning we will be back at seven twenty-seven.
I got a motion.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, all those opposed, same sign. This is Blake, aye.
Shanda, aye.
Marilyn, aye.
Beth, aye.
David, aye.
Leonard, aye.
All right, we will resume back at twenty-seven.
We will still be here.
Okay.
I'll be getting my dessert out of there.
You know, when they do executive session, you can count five minutes to be, for your
Oh, it's okay.
Okay, just so you guys know, we're good. Okay.
Okay, we are all back in. Dr. Ruda, a minute to get back to his seat. We still are at seven twenty-seven, back from executive session, no action taken. Before we adjourn, I would just like to draw your attention to the upcoming calendar dates. Of course, right now, we're in the midst of final exams. They're all being done virtually or online. As Pearl had mentioned, we've got some difficulties with it, but we'll get through it, always do. All employee meeting in a couple of days, Christmas break where the campus was closed, December nineteenth through January third. In-service on the sixth of January, twenty twenty-one. Semester starts January eleventh, our next board meeting. Besides, on Saturday, the special meeting, December twelfth, our next board meeting will be January twelfth here in the conference room at six P M. our next board meeting, um, besides on Saturday, the special meeting, um, December twelfth, our next board meeting will be January twelfth, here, um, in the conference room at six P. M. Um, and then there's another all employees meeting there, um, it'll be by Zoom, huh? Okay, um, that, I guess both of them will be, so, and then, um, Martin Luther King observance, do we have any, is there anybody, is there, usually they bring in somebody or?
No.
Doesn't have anybody set up? Okay, okay.
She's working on it.
She's working on it, okay, fair enough, that's obviously January eighteenth, um, with that.
Oh, I have a question.
Yes.
On Saturday's, um.
Board meeting.
Work day, what are we supposed to bring, or anything we have in our hands right now?
Pam's going to be sending some handouts.
Okay.
They'll have their forty.
But I've wondered if any of the other stuff.
Any of the stuff that you've kind of put together, you know, as far as we've discussed about, um, um, for, um, board evaluation as well as president's evaluation, that's the two topics that we'll be working on, so anything that you've done on your own time, um, so we can have discussion about that, um, would be anything that you want to bring, but otherwise, um, you know, um, for the most part, it won't be anything else, but work through there, so, it will be in here, yep.
Oh, I have you in the endowment room.
You have us in the endowment room.
In the endowment room, so you can spread out and you will.
Okay.
Send Marie's over there, she can get you your lunch.
Okay, great, so the endowment room, um, okay, um, other than that, um, I guess